Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Township Council meeting Monday, April 29, 2024. This meeting is now called to order. Please all arise. Councilwoman Hablet's lead us in the salute to the flag.
Steep the flag of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. At this time, Madam Clerk, can you read the statement of public notice?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 4, 2024. A copy of the notice was sent to the North Jersey Herald and News on the record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
President.
Councilmember Murphy.
President.
Councilmember Hablet.
President.
Councilmember Vanchery.
President.
Council President Scobbe.
Present. If there's no objections, we'd like to take a motion for the approval of the meeting of the minutes of the meeting of March 25 and April 8.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman, Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Vanchery. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablet.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scobbe.
Yes. Mayor Damianno, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we get to the complete agenda this evening, we do have a proclamation in honor of Arbor Day. And I am pleased to report that the Girl Scouts assisted us in planting one tree this past Friday, and the municipality has 14 additional trees that will be planted within the next couple of weeks. Several of them will be planted on a roadway where one or two trees came down as a result of a complete streets. In Belgium blocks being added to the roadway, and about a dozen will be planted in other various portions of town that have the room and space for these trees. So I'm pleased to report that in just about a week's period of time, we'll be planting 15 trees here in Little Falls. And this evening, in honor of Arbor Day, we have a proclamation to read, and it reads, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of our Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, James Belford Damianno, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the Township of Little Falls, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. The Council President, that's all that I have for the top of my report this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up the floor to Mr. John Beagle from the Clifton Health Department, and he'll introduce his team, and he'll go for the report. Mr. Beagle?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Beagle. I'm the health officer for the Township of Little Falls. With me tonight to do a presentation will be our medical director, Dr. Timothy Cowell, our projects coordinator, Jennifer Kidd, and our health educator, Leal Hawani. So tonight, we're just going to review our annual report from last year and also come up or give you some information about some of our initiatives that we're doing for 2024. At this time, I would like to bring up Jennifer Kidd to discuss our accreditation and also our social service division.
Good evening. As John said, my name is Jennifer Kidd. I'm the project coordinator at the Clifton Health Department, and I was the accreditation coordinator over the last several years in the department. We are very excited. I think one of the biggest accomplishments that we had in 2023 was that we became nationally accredited. We were the sixth local health department in the state of New Jersey and the first local health department in Passaic County to become accredited, and we are really excited to have this designation. We have been voluntarily accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board, and the Public Health Accreditation Board helps to ensure that the programs and services that we offer to our residents are as responsive as possible to their needs. Accreditation strengthens our infrastructure and workforce development, ensuring that health departments have the necessary systems in place to efficiently deliver high-quality public health services. It serves as a catalyst for continuous development and continuous performance improvement, enhancing our emergency preparedness efforts and fostering quality of quality improvement within the department. Basically, we went through an incredibly rigorous process to attain accreditation since 2015. It's a really prestigious designation for a local health department. Like I said, it is voluntary here in the state of New Jersey. So we are really proud to have gotten this designation, and it shows our residents that we are transparent in everything that we do, and it holds our staff more accountable for what we do on a daily basis, and it really just has created a culture of quality improvement for the department. Something else that we want to bring to your attention that started in 2023 besides becoming accredited is we have added on a social services division to the health department. Our social services division is currently comprised of three people. We have a social worker, Tom Sadowski, and we have two social services assistants, Erica Shiroki and Nathaniel King. In response to the mental health crisis that is going on in our country and the fact that we are in the wake of a global pandemic, we thought that having a social services division was really necessary for both the city of Clifton and the township of Little Falls. Our staff that we have is amazing. Tom, he works primarily with children and with people that have disabilities in their families. Nate works primarily with our unhoused population and with veterans, and Erica works with people who are struggling with substance use disorder. We're really excited to have this new division in place. John had fought for this for a very long time to be able to have this added to the health department. We do provide these services to the Township of Little Falls, of course. Currently, we are working with United Methodist Church with their youth group. We have Tom and Nate is working with them right now on just mental health awareness and also having compassion for the unhoused, and they're actually putting bags together for the unhoused. I think it's next week we're going to be meeting with the youth from United Methodist Church. What we're also doing here in the Township of Little Falls with our social services division is our mindfulness Mondays programs that we have in the Little Falls Elementary Schools. Mindfulness is really just a state of mental well-being and something that we try to instill in our students is to be present in the moment. We are working currently with the third and fourth grade students here in the Township of Little Falls, and we've reached over 200 students with this program through our social services division. Our mindfulness for kids program focuses on teaching elementary school-aged children various breathing techniques and mindfulness practices such as meditation that increase positive emotions, memory, attention, and compassion, while also decreasing stress and negative emotions. We're really excited because we're working with Councilwoman Patel in bringing our mindfulness program to families so that we can work with not just children but also adults. And we're going to be doing some mindfulness programs at the public library in May and June for Mental Health Awareness Month. So we're very excited about that. I think that's it in terms of social services and what we've been doing. I'm going to turn it over now to Leal Hawani. Oh, no, it's back to John. It's back to John to talk to, to talk to you about our environmental health division.
Thank you, Jennifer, and she was a true leader during this accreditation process, so thank you. Got my book? There you go. So I will be just briefly talking about our animal control division and also our registered environmental health specialists. So far, as far as animal control, we have four animal control officers that are available 24/7. We work very closely with the police department on a variety of issues, whether it be stray dogs, dogs abandoned. Unfortunately, we just had a dog that was abandoned last week or two weeks ago, and the dog is doing well. The, the one thing that a lot of people don't realize is that the Clifton Health Department has an animal shelter on City Hall property. And when an animal comes to our shelter, we have to hold that animal for seven days. And then if the owner does not come forward, we then go and adopt that animal now. But we've been working with Little Falls probably over 12 years now, I believe, and we've always had a good rapport with the citizens and and the response. And animal control is under the health department because of rabies control. And we have our rabies, we have one rabies clinic at least a year here. Last week, I believe, we had 39 individuals come get their animals vaccinated. We also deal with dog bites. Unfortunately, that's when there's dogs and there's people, you're going to have dog bites. And we will respond. Our inspector gets involved and animal control will get involved. So that's just a brief statement on animal control. As far as our environmental division led by Nino Antilli, Nino is pretty much here every day. Nino is responsible for Little Falls, and he also, we also have some other inspectors that that come to Little Falls. We have about 135 inspections. They're based on risk. Risk one is a very low risk. It's basically prepackaged items, but we do that at least once a year. Risk two is something where they do some preparation, but not where they're cooling and cooking, et cetera, on an eccentric basis. And then the last one is risk three, which is basically they cook and cool down over three products. So that's a higher risk where some individuals can get sick, and we inspect them at least almost twice a year. And we have risk fours, which are sushi places which have a specialized processing. And if I, if I ask this question, I always ask, if you're eating sushi, raw sushi, you think you could get sick from the fish or from the rice? And majority of the people say it's the fish. But to be honest, it's the rice, because if the rice is not with proper pH, but putting vinegar or acidity, the lower that acidity factor, bacteria won't grow. So your chances of getting sick from a sushi is rarely more from the rice. Just figured you want to know that. And then also, we also, in the environmental, we do our public pool inspections. We do, we have two at Montclair State, one which is a year-round one, so we do that twice a year. And then the other three in the community, we do once a year. We have body art, and we also have septic systems. So in some parts of the township, there are septic systems, and a lot of times we would get involved if there is something failing, and we, we get involved with that. Sometimes that could be closely to the homeowner, but we try to work with those individuals. And we also do the temporary events that we have around, you know, July 4 and block parties, et cetera. And we also hold food handling classes for the restaurants and the owners of Township of Little Falls. So at this point, I will turn it over to Leal Hawani.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. So I'm going to be talking briefly about what we did in terms of health education in 2023 in the Township of Little Falls. So for the health education division, we are primarily responsible for providing up-to-date information on various health matters and healthy behavior changes. Now, we do this primarily, well, we do this in part through in-person programs, but also on our social media. We are very active on Facebook and on Instagram. And now we actually launched our own podcast. It's called Clifton, Clifton Health on Air, and it's available on all major streaming platforms. So in health education, we truly work with all populations ranging from children to seniors. In the annual report, you can take a look at some of the programs that we typically offer. But in 2023 specifically, we did hold 45 single-session educational programs. This includes all of the bloodborne pathogen trainings, which were, which were offered to police, fire, EMS, DPW, the Recreation Department, and the CERT team, Clifton Emerg-, no, sorry, not, Little Falls CERT team, a Community Emergency Response Team. I like to think that I do a good job with the bloodborne pathogens training, right? Changing it up, doing the games, throwing the candy at you. Okay, I see, I see approval from our chief and our councilwoman, the councilman. And these programs also include our school-based programs. We've made an effort to really emphasize the vaping prevention programs, just because it's one of those issues that still remains among our youth. And so we spent a lot of time last year providing those programs to school number one. We've also done the dental health programs for pre-K and kindergarten students. Last year, we offered these programs to Sunny Days Preschool and the Ben Samuels Children's Center. These programs also include the screenings that we held in Clifton, all of which had an educational component. We always have out literature, and the staff are available to answer any questions and provide health education. So some of the screenings that we offered were the bone density screening, hearing screening, oral cancer, mental health, and eye screenings. We also hosted a community baby shower on May 6, which was also open to Little Falls residents. I also oversee our tobacco age-of-sale enforcement program. What the program entails is that we visit all of our licensed tobacco establishments in Clifton and in Little Falls. We sent in an underage student to attempt to purchase tobacco product. Obviously, if that sale was made, that's a problem because the person is under, because the student is underage. But the other thing we're looking for is making sure that these places are not selling the flavored vapor products, which have been illegal since April of 2020. So we did this in Little Falls in June of 2022. We issued five summonses for selling to a minor. And then we also issued five NOVs for having the flavored vapor products. We re-inspected in November 2022 and issued four summonses for the flavored vapor products. Unfortunately, I did not get the opportunity to do this in 2023. It was on maternity leave for the later half of the year. But we do have every intention of resuming this in Little Falls, because it's something that remains a challenge, you know, holding these, these establishments accountable. Just talking briefly about our nursing division. So a major part of what this division does is communicable disease investigations and immunization audits of daycares, pre-Ks, and schools. So last year, our nurses investigated 102 communicable diseases, non-COVID-related. We, in Little Falls, received a total of 237 COVID cases. Just keep in mind, these are just the cases that were reported. A lot of people are testing at home, so it does not include any of that. And we investigated about 60 of those cases due to the updated CDC guidelines, which calls for local health departments to investigate the hospital-based COVID cases. In 2023, we, so our nurses audited 12 schools and daycares. This year, we did 10, and approximately 704 records were audited to ensure compliance with immunization requirements. I also want to add that our dental clinic for school-aged children is up and running. It's a phenomenal service. It's for children, school-aged children, 5 to 18 years old, and includes free dental care consisting of exams, x-rays, screenings, and fillings. During the summer months, we do plan on bringing back our Vaccine for Children, VFC clinic, which will, we will be heavily promoting among our schools. And then for more information, upcoming events and screenings, we brought a ton of flyers from the health department, which are on the back table over there. And then just to kind of wrap things up with our strengthening team, aka our COVID and infectious diseases team. So we were able to keep our strengthening team thanks to grant funding, and they assist the nursing and health education divisions. Specifically, they assisted the nursing division with homebound vaccinations. They distributed COVID test kits, which we have plenty of if you need. At various sites in Little Falls, they provided outreach at the library on a number of different occasions, and they participated in various city events in Little Falls. The Memorial Day Concert, the Little Falls Block Party, in addition to a Resource Fair at the Civic Center. They also primarily handled the handwashing education, and they provided seven in 2023. So I think that's all I have. I'll turn it back to John.
Okay, I'll just wrap it up real quick. I just want to say to Chuck, congratulations on your retirement. It's been a pleasure working with you. I know you still have a few meetings left, so you're not out of the woods yet, but truly appreciate you. And Mayor, over, you know, during COVID, I think we were on the phone many, many times, talking about some tough decisions and some rough, you know, rough times, and thank you for being there and counsel as well. We recently, last year, started working with Councilwoman Patel. Thank you for that, and we look forward to working with everybody. You know, we're always here. If anyone needs us, we're, we're just a phone call away, so please always reach out to us. And I think that's all I have.
Ms. Beagle, if your staff and yourself could stay for a few moments, and we're going to open this up to the public to ask some questions before we continue. Councilwoman Patel, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
No, I mean, my report's going to be very short since the department is actually here, but I just wanted to thank them for coming tonight, and really, it's been a pleasure working with you, and thank you for everything that you do for Little Falls.
Thank you. Those residents in the audience or those on Zoom, if you'd like to ask the Clifton Health Department any questions, please come up to the podium. For the record, you could just state your name.
My name is Norman Scherzer.
Good evening.
Longtime resident of Little Falls and an old public health guy with some experience in communicable diseases. So I have a couple of comments to make. One of the things I should mention is that I sent 11 questions to to John and his staff a couple of days ago, and answered every one of them, responded, and I, and I learned a lot. I learned, I, I thought I knew a lot about health departments and what was going on, but clearly I needed to catch up, and I learned a lot. So I have some comments and suggestions, and I want to, I want to preview them by saying, I'm not here to criticize anyone. I, I think that, that there are concerns that I have about public health in general and how we might, we might improve public health. Just for the record, I spent 25 years working for the Centers for Disease Control, and I was Assistant Commissioner of Health for Epidemiology and Prevention for New York City and some other stuff since then, including running a cancer organization. And I believe that the public health infrastructure, and many of my colleagues agree with me, has been broken in this country. It is less funded, less staff than it used to be. There used to be a time when the Centers for Disease Control assigned field staff to every state health department in the United States, every major city, every regional office, and that entire Field Services Division of CDC was, was totally wiped out, no longer funded, and so on. And I think what happens here in Little Falls is that we're at the tail end of a structure that the federal public health structure has been broken. The state has not, has not received the kind of funding and infrastructure it used to, and then goes down to the county, and finally we wind up in Little Falls, and and I think we're left to pick up the pieces. Couple of thank yous. I've spent quite a bit of time with Janet Patel and with Anthony Scobbe, some of Emil's, and I, and I appreciate the time that, that you've given to me. I think that there, there are a couple of areas that, in terms of the questions I'd like to address, I'd sent a note to Council President Scobbe. Rather than read through this list of 11 questions and what have you, I would simply ask that you, if you could put the questions and the response of the health department into the meeting report, I think the people of Little Falls would get to see a lot more about what's going on. And the focus of my questions have been in the area of communicable diseases. I'm concerned about what we have learned and what we may not have learned, having come through the worst pandemic in over 100 years. The last time the United States faced a pandemic like COVID was during World War I. And at that time, we were worried about our troops on troop ships going back and back and forth. Millions of people in this country, actually 1 million people of our residents in the United States died from COVID. There are a couple of areas that I think that, that we might want to take a look at. And my purpose of mentioning them is that I think, I think one of the worst experiences in public health is when somebody becomes very sick or dies from a preventable disease. It's one thing for people to, to succumb to other diseases, and I think some of you know, I lost my daughter a couple of months ago, and I thank those on the Township Committee who reached out to me and, and helped me. But people should not have to die from COVID or flu or, or other diseases where, where the disease, in fact, may be, may be preventable. So the couple of areas that I'd like to comment on, one is that I think we need to do a better job of communication. I was amazed at how much I learned about the health department. I had no idea that, that Leal, and by the way, I keep screwing up her name, but I had no idea that, how much you were, you were involved in MSU and some of the work that you're doing there. Paul M. Shiba, who's sitting here with me, he and I were talking about trying to reach out to MSU and do some work with them, and I finally found that how much you're already doing and that you're on the, on the faculty of MSU. I think that we need to improve communications. The gap in terms of what I had to learn about the health department over the last couple of days has to be much greater in terms of what, what other residents learn. I think that we need to fix our website. The Little Falls website should have the same information that is available to Clifton residents on the Clifton website. It's fine to, to refer people when you go on the Little Falls website to the Clifton one, but basically, we ought to have it here. And either we do it or we give them access to it. But I think we can do a better job in terms of, in terms of that, of that website. I think that we can do a better job at what I think is probably the most important public health issue in terms of communicable diseases today. And that is, what, what, what do we need to do and what can we do to deal with the continuation of COVID? COVID has not gone away. Most cases are no longer reported because people are self-testing, but we're learning more and more about COVID, and we're learning more about long-term COVID and, and the, and the pretty significant implications of, of this disease. And our strategy has been over the last few years to recommend vaccinations, masking, distancing, contact tracing, and quarantine. And the reality today is that very little of that is going to take place. Unfortunately, people are fatigued in terms of vaccine. And I think the vaccine rates, if we, if we really had really great data, we would find that these rates have gone down. And I don't think we see people masking anymore or expect to see it. But there's one thing I think that we can do, and there's one thing that I learned when I read the health department's response to my questions. And that is to do something about, about the air. So I'm going to give you my, my old CDC 101 in terms of airborne illnesses. How do people spread the disease, whether it's flu or COVID or RSV from one person to the other? We used to think, by the way, when COVID started, that perhaps people were catching it through surfaces. And so we had a major campaign that went on, keep washing and keep washing. And we later discovered that all that could happen, that these viruses don't live very long on surfaces. So how does my virus get from here over to the mayor? Picture a situation where you're sitting in a room and you see sunlight coming into the room. And what do you see in the room? You see speckles of dust all over the room. Viruses have no wings. They have no feet. So they wait, the way they get from one person to another is the viruses cling to the dust particles. And when I cough in the air, if I have COVID and the mayor comes walking by me a few minutes later and breathes in the air with that dust particle, that's one of the ways he can catch, he can catch COVID. Council President Scobbe had, I think he was excited, and I was too. We saw, we saw a documentary a couple of months ago on CBS where, where they spoke. a couple of months ago on CBS where, where they spoke about what we could do to make sure that we did a better job in filtering the air, particularly in our public buildings and schools, so that we remove the dust particles and those viruses have nothing to cling to. And what I was really disappointed to learn is that we're not doing this yet. That we don't have a major program in place, whether it's in our schools or this room or what have you, to monitor the air. And, and we do have standards in place. CDC has come out with recommendations over the last couple of months to, to filter the air. And the basic recommendation is to have equipment, ventilation filtering equipment that filters the air, I think it was five times every minute or so. I'm not an expert in this particular area. I realize that we need certain kinds of expertise. But I think if, if we were to add one thing to our repertoire going forward, it would be to be, to begin to develop a program, first of all, to test the air. I think parents have a right to know whether, whether the rooms that their, their children spend so much time in during the day are safe to breathe. And by the way, when you look at schools, even though I think we do a great job in looking at vaccination levels, we used to call schools the germ factories of the world. And we have a particularly robust germ factory at, at Passaic Valley, not because anybody's doing anything wrong there, but because it's a feeder school for three towns. So my plea is, in addition to fixing our website, what can we do to, first of all, test the air to see if there's a problem? Let people know and then figure out what is the resolution and how much does the, does the resolution cost? And having said that, I think I'll stop. I want to thank the, the health department for here tonight, but there is one other thing, I'm sorry, one final thing. Every time I come to a meeting and I watch most of them by video, I see the police department sitting at the table and I'm glad you're here. Once in a while, I'd like to see the health department sitting at the seat at the same table. And we've discussed this, Anthony Skorber and I, and that is, can we put public health on the routine agenda of our township meetings? And although I think Jana does a very nice job calling and feeding back and forth, there's no substitute for having somebody with public health credentials periodically appear and be part of these meetings. And I think that would dramatically help to, to facilitate communications. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Scherzer, for coming before us. And I, I remember your daughter while we sat behind each other in homeroom in Mr. Sidon's class. Councilwoman Patel, do you ever want to comment on the, possibly bringing in the health department on?
Yes, Council President, thank you. I could actually comment on two of the things. I've already started communications between our IT department and the Clifton department that takes care of their website. So that's already in the works to update our Little Falls website. And then in terms of having the health officer here, I have been reviewing and trying to figure out what form of the health department would best fit for Little Falls. And I spoke to Council President this weekend. We do believe moving forward as council and the mayor do act as the health department, we're going to have quarterly Board of Health meetings where someone from the health department will be present and it will be presented, you know, as a regular meeting prior to a council meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone from the dais have any comments, questions? Mr. Beagle, do you have a follow up?
Yeah, you know, you're, you are correct, Mr. Scherzer, about public health. And there's a documentary on PBS and it's called The Invisible Shield. And nobody knows about the health department until something becomes visible. We learned that with the pandemic. So you are right. We have no problem coming to any meeting, any educational session. That's what we're here to do. We're educators first. Hey, sometimes in the real world, we have to be enforcers, but we're educators. So we want to be here. We want to be anywhere where we can educate. And if we help one person a day, that is our goal, right? If we could help one person a day, walk out of the office and say, hey, we helped somebody. That's what we're here for. So and we do just, just, we do meet with other health departments once, once a month. So I know you have regards to Passaic Valley. We are the lead health department and we have gone there. Mr. Haley has my phone number. I've talked to him many, many times too, so. But I thank everyone. I also want to thank Councilwoman Vincere, I forgot to give you a shout out to. We've worked very closely together. So I appreciate your time there and everyone else and I thank you.
Mayor, the, thank you. So, Mr. Scherzer, if you would, just so we can record it, if you want to say it, because for the record.
We've been talking earlier and I've, and I've forgotten remarks about creating an appropriate memorial in Little Falls, similar to the one that, that the city of Clifton has, which acknowledges and pays respect to, in our case, 26 of our residents, mostly seen as citizens, who died during COVID. And I forgot during my interchange, the health department has offered to, to work with us and I would ask my colleague, Mr. Beagle, to, to comment on that.
So, Mr. Beagle, would you like to comment on how you put up the flags?
Sure. I mean, they're just small flags in honor of each individual that has passed away. This year, we could put them wherever you feel next, you know, in front of the town hall or wherever, and maybe in the future, we could build something. Doesn't have to be, you know, that grave. I think there needs to be something to remind us of the people that lost their lives, the people that worked during this pandemic and just everybody that was affected because everybody was affected. If you were alive, you were affected. And you mentioned long-term COVID, whether it be mental health or whether it be physical, that's a real thing. So I, I think we would like to do that. We would support whatever.
So that would be through the mayor's office. Mayor, would you have any comment or, but that, something that we can move on?
I agree. I believe some doing something like that would be, would be great.
So we'll be in touch with your office and we'll work out the details and figure this out.
Okay.
Mr. Kucia, is there anyone on the chat that'd like to speak on this topic? Thank you.
If I may just to, a couple of Mr. Scherzer's inquiries. First is, Little Falls is in the process of revamping its entire website. The current website is frankly out of date. The mobile use on the website is near impossible. Getting to a point where we have a more updated website is something that we need to do, not only for health purposes, but for ease of access for all residents, for any normal questions they may have or various departments that they may need to access. So we are in the process of redoing that and we'll also have a mobile portion to it. So we will have that and, and getting additional information from the Clifton Health Department or linking particular things over to them is something we can absolutely include in that. And the next question, I know you've asked on a number of occasions and we've gotten an answer, is the filtration in this particular building. I can only speak for this building and municipal buildings. The best filter that we have is in the recreation center. The indoor section of that, that has a very high rated HEPA filter. It was in the middle of COVID that we installed that particular air filtration system. It was when we added air conditioning to the recreation center. And in the middle of that, we had asked, because it was the start of COVID, that a better filter be considered there. And there was some additional cost because the filter is tighter and allows less air to pass through. We needed to put in a little bit more of a powerful mo, powerful motor and a couple of other components to ensure that it would continue to flow the amount of air that it needed to while getting the filtration that would, that was necessary. Here in this building, we currently operate with MERV eight filters. They collect up to 85% of particles in the air and that's what's currently being utilized in this building here. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any other comments? Seen any, will move forward. Thank you for joining us this evening and expressing your concern. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Beagle, to your staff as well. Thank you. We'll be in contact. We'll move on to council reports. Councilman Murphy, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Council President. So just two quick updates on the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee. I had a great talk last week with the Passaic County Women's Center on donating some of the funds that we received from the Dine to Donate events. I know a lot of residents came out to support the, the committee and I think it's going to be good for them to see exactly where their, you know, their funds and money is being used towards. So they're putting together a list for us with some items that they would like us to purchase. So once we receive that list, we'll work on getting some of those items and donating it to the shelter. And I'll, I'll be sure to update the residents on when that happens. I also had a conversation with Superintendent of Passaic Valley, Dr. Healy and Giselle De Silva from the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office. I know a couple of months back, I discussed the event that we were looking to hold up as a valley. Right now, we kind of have a tentative date of June 19th for the Safe Dating Presentation, which is the prosecutor's office doing a presentation for some students at Passaic Valley on safe dating and going through some of the, you know, effects and, and going into a little bit of detail for them. So we're working on firming that date up. We should know probably this week or next week exactly which date we're going to use, but right now it looks like June 19th. Once that's finalized, I'll, I'll let everybody know. Other than that, I did want to thank the Clifton Health Department for coming out. Fantastic presentation is, it's good to see that the, the amount of work that they're doing for us really is good. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. Councilman Vincere?
Thanks, Council President. First, also want to echo thank you to John Beagle and his staff. You know, we've had, I've had the pleasure of working with him the last eight years as a member of the council. And then when I'm not doing this, my other job, because we are in Clifton, we get a chance to work with him and his staff. So appreciate the time and effort that they put to help our residents with all their needs. A few updates on my end too is Councilwoman Patel and I connected today. We're working out the details with May, you know, for Mental Health Awareness Month, trying to sort of tie the two events together, the flag raising and the wellness initiative is going to take place at the library. So more details to come on that, but we do have a date in mind where we could, you know, host the event and the flag raising. A couple of other events that are coming up as, you know, we finish up April and head to May with the Memorial Day weekend activities. The planning has begun and I have a meeting this week with several township officials just to go over some details for the event on May 24th, which is the Concert in the Park, as well as the parade the next day on May 25th. So, you know, I'm pleased to say that the responses have been great in terms of both the days, the participation. I know I've reached out to some of my colleagues as well to see if any committees or different groups that you're a part of are interested in whether showing up at the concert the night before or even participating in the parade. So all are welcome. You guys know that, so just keep me posted if anything changes on your end. Have been working too behind the scenes, you know, with our engineers as well as the mayor and Mr. Kucia and Mr. Patrone, just finalizing the details. I know it's on the resolution tonight for the speed humps for Houston. We're finally progressing to the point where, you know, we're ready to kind of approve the resolution and then move ahead with the actual work. We're also working with the engineer to look at some other streets in town. Hoping to have some updates soon, but you know, after connecting with some residents about some concerns and the police has been looking into some of the streets as well, we're looking at possibly adding more, but I'll have some updates in the near future. And another update too from our engineer, you know, our traffic light that's coming to Francisco and Cedar Grove Road. We're hoping to have that sometime in June. Fingers crossed that that isn't delayed any longer. Definitely looking forward to it. And, you know, Council President, if I could, Mayor, just wanted to ask you real quick, because I know it's the million dollar question on social media. If you do read it as much, you know, on a daily basis, the traffic light on Stevens and Main. Any update in terms of timing when that light will be operational?
Great question. I actually just sent out an email about that earlier this evening to our PSENG representative. We are still awaiting, PSENG has now finally installed the electrical meter on the control box, which will electrify all of the components. Unfortunately, there's no electric actually run to the meter to power all of the components. So getting electric from the pole to the meter is the next step. Apparently that's a different division at PSENG than the division that installs the meter. So we are waiting for this separate division to come in and install the power from the lines down the pole to this actual meter. At that point, we can get the new lights operational. And from there, we can decommission and remove all of the old lights and poles that are in the intersection. This is an all hands on deck. Everybody has been reaching out, including our engineers. I am now using other avenues, including a regional representatives and, and things such as that to try to help move this along as well. It's becoming frustrating that it's just sitting there with, you know, 15 lights hanging in that intersection right now because the old ones cannot be decommissioned until the new ones are obviously up and running. So we are doing everything we can in order to move that along. But unfortunately, we're just at a stalemate because of PSENG.
Thank you, Mayor. And just one last thing I just wanted to mention and kudos to our DBW department as well as the mayor and Commissioner Lazara. As I mentioned last meeting, there were some concerns with some pipe issues backing up some of the water on Main Street and Francisco and Cedar Grove Road. And because of this, you know, and thanks to Commissioner Lazara working behind the scenes and working with the administration of the county, both areas where there's been issues with water have been addressed. So, you know, it took a little while, but thanks to her being proactive and getting on some of the colleagues, it was addressed finally. So I know the businesses on Main Street are going to be happy as well as some of the residents on Francisco and Cedar Grove Road. And there's one other one that, you know, we're working on with the county on Main Street as well. Hopefully it'll be addressed. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Havitz.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll start off with some library updates. This Saturday, May the 4th, they are having a lightsaber craft for May the 4th be with you for all of those Star Wars fans. That will be at 11:00 AM, ages seven and up, and you do need to register on their website for it. Tomorrow night, they are having one of my all-time favorites. He is a regular at the farmer's market as well. They will have a meet and greet and book signing with Produce Pete from News 4 at 6:00 PM tomorrow night. And then on Friday, we will continue our Noon in the Know series. This Friday, we have a special guest that will be at 12 noon. That is a Facebook Live. It gives you all of the township updates. This Saturday, fingers crossed, the no rain. There will be our bike rodeo beginning at school number one from 10 to 12 PM. Our police department will be there as well as Avenues in Motion and the Loose Wheel, which is a local resident and bike shop. They will be doing bike inspections, helmet giveaways, bike raffles. There's pizza, ice cream and more. You do need to register on Community Pass, but registration is free. This is for children six and over. The farmer's market is beginning in just about a month. Our weekly Friday Facebook series started up again last Friday, Talking Farmer's Market. As one of the founders, I had the pleasure of being interviewed along with my co-founder, Tanya Seber on Friday. It is our fifth anniversary of the market. I can't believe it's been five years already. When we started out in COVID, we said we had 13 vendors. We started planning before COVID and then COVID came and there were 13 vendors. And now we average weekly 20 to 22 vendors each week. We have food trucks coming this week, I mean, this year, excuse me. Lots of entertainment and events, so please stop by. The market is starting May 19th. Runs from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM every Sunday. And then lastly, as the mayor stated, I was happy to organize our annual tree planting with our Girl Scouts and the Shade Tree Commission. They've been doing a great job. It's just one of three trees that they've planted over the last couple of years that are eastern rosebuds. They are along the path at Wilmore Park and they're very, very pretty. And I'm really thankful that the Girl Scouts have decided to help us with this. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Patel?
Thank you, Council President. Mine will be very quick since the Board of Health did steal my thunder a little bit. I do want to thank them again. I work with John and his entire team on a regular basis and they really are always there for whatever I need them for and to even just sit down and brainstorm and get new events to Little Falls. For the month of May, it's Mental Health Awareness. So as Kim mentioned before, they are currently doing a mindfulness program in the schools for third and fourth graders. But we've decided to take that and make it into a family event. And it's going to be held in two sessions. It's going to be May 18th and then June 1st from 10:30 to 12:30. And you'll be able to register through the library website probably later this week, but I'll keep everyone posted on that. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Chief Pearl, do you have anything for the governing bodies this evening?
No report tonight, sir.
Thank you. I just want to comment, thank you for the extensive report that you supplied the council on your activities in the department. I attended a meeting last week at the county with Matt Jordan, Commissioner Lazara, about six different engineers concerning the Peckman Bridge that is, that the county has a federal grant to build and erect over the Peckman. This bridge was approved with the, with about being a one foot, with the 100-year floodplain with being about one foot over the 100-year floodplain mark. The concern was new regulations came out The concern was new regulations came out with a five hundred year floodplain, which mean, which would mean elevating the bridge. I had discussions with the mayor because our primary concern is the safety of our residents. And we wouldn't want to cause any additional flooding if this bridge span was, uh, to be erected and trees were to be caught underneath. However, with this new proposal, if the, if the county's engineers can design it, which we're hopeful, we will have a bridge span over the Peckman that is about three feet over the five hundred year floodplain. So we're looking forward to seeing those, uh, if that can happen. There will possibly be warning lights on Cedar Grove Road. So when you cross over to the Morris Canal walkway, it would alert drivers, uh, to slow down as you cross that area. Want to wish everybody a happy Passover. And also we're working on a GPS Hometown Heroes program, correct, Mr. Cordone? This is an interesting program that we're thinking of is that those people that want to come from out of town or even live in town, would be able to locate, uh, veterans banners or hometown hero, hometown hero banners on their phone. Also too, then maybe in, uh, expanding that program, possibly to have a, uh, recording voice of a veteran and, uh, as a cost field trip, uh, that each, um, you could, I hate to say click on or push. And you'd be able to hear the voice of the veteran explaining that hometown hero, who, who he was and, uh, what their life was about. So we're looking to also then expand that as well.
Counselor, you have anything for this governing body?
No.
Have a motion to open to a meeting to the public for agenda items only. Moved by Councilman Vanchery, second by Councilwoman Havletts. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Madam Clerk?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in our council chambers? Is there anyone on the chat, Mr. Kusia? Thank you. Have a motion to close the public comment. By Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havletts. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilman, um, Councilman Vanchery, second by Councilwoman Patel. Please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Madam Clerk, read ordinance fourteen eighty.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to add chapter one thirty-four mutual aid to the code of the Township of Little Falls.
Thank you. The public, the public hearing on ordinance fourteen eighty is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty? Seeing no one come forward, can, uh, I will close the hearing on fourteen eighty is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Vanchery. This is a roll call to adopt fourteen eighty. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, read ordinance fourteen eighty-one, please.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-one, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey amending and supplementing chapter one sixty-three of the Township Code regarding regarding requirement for inspection of lead based paint in certain residential dwellings.
The public hearing on ordinance fourteen eighty-one is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on ordinance fourteen eighty-one? Seeing no one come forward to speak before us, the public hearing on ordinance fourteen eighty-one is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilwoman Havletts. This is a roll call to adopt fourteen eighty-one. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen eighty-two, please.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-two, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the Little Falls Fire Division and the Code of the Township of Little Falls, Code Section three dash seven point eight, entitled Fire Division.
The public hearing on fourteen eighty-two is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on ordinance fourteen eighty-two? Seeing no one come before us to speak on the public hearing on ordinance fourteen eighty-two is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-two.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havletts. This is a roll call to adopt fourteen eighty-two. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance fourteen eighty-three.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-three, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Construction of a Footbridge from Morris Canal Park to the Passaic River in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
The public hearing on ordinance fourteen eighty-three is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-three? Seeing no one come forward to speak on fourteen eighty-three, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-three.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilwoman Havletts. Madam Clerk, call the roll on fourteen eighty-three.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen eighty-four.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-four, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Various Improvements to the Civic Center Building in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you. The public hearing on fourteen eighty-four is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-four? Seeing no one come before us to speak on fourteen eighty-four, the public hearing ordinance is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-four. Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilwoman Havletts. Madam Clerk, call the roll on fourteen eighty-four.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen eighty-five, please.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-five, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize Construction of a Vehicle Enclosure for the Office of Emergency Management in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you. The public hearing on fourteen eighty-five is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-five? Seeing no one else come, uh, seeing no one else come to speak on fourteen eighty-five, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-five.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Havletts, second by Councilwoman Vanchery. Madam Clerk, call the roll for fourteen eighty-five.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen eighty-six.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-six, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Bank Stabilization at Various Locations Along the Peckman, Peckman River in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
The public hearing on fourteen eighty-six is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-six? Seeing no one come before us to speak on fourteen eighty-six, the public hearing is now closed. Madam, uh, have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-six.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Vanchery. Please call the roll to adopt fourteen eighty-six.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, at this time, please read ordinance fourteen eighty-seven.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-seven, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Sanitary Sewer Improvements at Various Locations in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Public hearing on fourteen eighty-seven is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-seven? Seeing no one come before us to speak on fourteen eighty-seven, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-seven. So moved. Moved by Councilman Vanchery?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havletts. Madam Clerk, call the roll for fourteen eighty-seven.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. You okay, Madam Clerk?
I'm good.
Please read ordinance fourteen eighty-eight.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-eight, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery and New Automotive Vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment for the use of the Police Department in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
The public hearing on fourteen eighty-eight is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-eight? Seeing no one else come to speak on fourteen eighty, the public hearing, the public hearing on ordinance fourteen eighty-eight is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-eight.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havletts. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen eighty-nine.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen eighty-nine, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Renovations to the Bathrooms and Snack Bar at Duba Field in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for but issuance, issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you. The public hearing on fourteen eighty-nine is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen eighty-nine? Seeing no one to come forward to speak on fourteen eighty-nine, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen eighty-nine.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vanchery?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havletts. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call. Call the, call the roll for fourteen eighty-nine.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen ninety.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen ninety, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of the Twenty Twenty Four Road Improvement Program in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
The public hearing on fourteen ninety is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen ninety? Seeing no one come before us to speak on fourteen ninety, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen ninety. Moved by Councilman Vanchery?
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen ninety-one.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen ninety-one, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery and New Automotive Vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to pay the cost, to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
The public hearing on fourteen ninety-one is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen ninety-one? Seeing, seeing no one come before us to speak on fourteen ninety-one, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen ninety-one.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Vanchery. Madam Clerk, call the roll on fourteen ninety-one.
Councilmember Patel? Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen ninety-two, please.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen ninety-two, an ordinance entitled Capital Ordinance to Appropriate the Sum of Two Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars for the Construction of Bathrooms at Wilmore Park in by and for the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey and Providing that Such Sum So Appropriated Shall Be Raised from a County Grant.
Public hearing on fourteen ninety-two is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on fourteen ninety-two? Seeing no one come before us to speak on fourteen ninety-two, the public hearing is now closed. Have a motion to adopt fourteen ninety-two.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Havletts, second by Councilman Murphy. This is a roll call. Call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen ninety-three.
Introduction of Ordinance Number fourteen ninety-three, an ordinance entitled, the ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jersey amending the Township Code Chapter one thirty-six noise with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Have a motion to introduce fourteen ninety-three. Moved by Councilwoman Patel?
Second.
Second by, uh, Councilman Murphy. This is a roll call. Call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, fourteen ninety-four.
Introduction of Ordinance Number fourteen ninety-four, an ordinance entitled Twenty Twenty Four Little Falls Salary Ordinance with a Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, read ordinance fourteen ninety-five. Oh, I'm sorry. Have a motion to introduce fourteen ninety. I apologize. Moved by Councilman Vanchery?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havletts is the roll call to introduce fourteen ninety-four.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Madam Clerk, read ordinance fourteen ninety-five.
Introduction of Ordinance Number fourteen ninety-five, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County Passaic State of New Jer- State of New Jersey to add chapter one fifty-two pedestrian malls to the code of the Township of Little Falls with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Have a motion to introduce fourteen ninety-five. Moved by Councilwoman Patel?
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy. Please call the roll to introduce fourteen ninety-five.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havletts?